Men, please be seated. The candidates' forum is about to begin. Thank you. We will begin in two minutes, ladies and gentlemen. Please take your seats. If there are any open seats, please make them readily available. Please do not clutter the seats because anybody coming in may wish to have a seat. There's also seating along the side of the wall. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. Good evening. Y'all better get ready, they're ready. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum. My name is May Ross, and I will be presenting the opening greetings, the forum for this evening's program. On behalf of our official sponsors, Democracy North Carolina, Cernco, Racial Justice, NCACDC, Skill and Sale Community Organizations, and P-Flat, we would like to thank you all for coming out this evening. I will be explaining the rules in which we will operate under tonight. This is a forum, not a debate, and we expect the candidates and the audience to be respectful of one another. Candidates, please address the audience and not each other. Audience, please turn off your cell phones and other devices. There is absolutely no recording unless you are a press member. Audience, please hold your applause. Noise and conversation until the end of the forum. Classes are still being held. Therefore, we ask when using the restrooms outside of the auditorium, you do so quietly or at a reasonable noise level. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, beginning with the ward candidates in numerical order, then alphabetically followed by the mayoral candidates in alphabetical order. Our moderators for this evening are Madryn Wineset and Teresa Alton. Each question has been carefully framed in our best attempts to be neutral, unbiased, and nonpartisan. Please remember that no word has been chosen to offend anyone or to presuppose support for any candidate, party, group, or organization. The questions will be poised to either all mayoral candidates, all ward candidates, or all candidates. Each person will have 90 seconds to respond and will be signaled by our timekeeper Sharon Evans by holding up a yellow card representing 30 seconds and a red card representing five seconds, or a bell that will sound when the candidate has run out of time. If a candidate does not need 90 seconds, they may yield their additional time. Natalie O'Ree and Dick Arno will be our stage managers for this evening. Once the forum has ended, all attendees are welcome to stay and speak with the candidates until the building closes at 10:00 PM. And now, ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, I introduce the candidates and their two-minute introduction. Thank you.
Want to say good evening to everyone. I'm Bronson Williams, the mayoral candidate for this Rocky Mountain election. And in this next two minutes, I want to talk about who I am and why I went to run for the office of mayor. Edgecombe County resident. Ran for mayor in 2015. Have been actively engaged in community conversation since middle school over four. When I look at Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, certainly we are faced with many struggles, challenges, but all are achievable challenges and struggles. As a community that is collectively working together, we can build the best Rocky Mountain there is and can be. Own a television station here in our community because I believe in putting accurate information out in our community. For too long, we've had misinformation in our community and oftentimes causes us not to work together as we should. That is my heart. That everybody is engaged from the smallest child to the oldest person that we have in our community. That everybody feels as though they matter and that they count. That is important to me. That is something that I've worked tirelessly for as I've been a resident in this community. And that has been all of mine, 33 years, except for the time I was at East Carolina University, where I majored in communications with a concentration in media studies, understanding the critical role as to how does media affect people. And I see those challenges every single day. And throughout the course of tonight, I hope that you will learn more about my position on things and see that they certainly relate to your positions and ideas on things. And by tonight, you'll know why Bronson Williams is the best candidate for the mayor of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina.
Hi, my name is Sandy Robertson. I too am a Rocky Mountain native. I grown up here. I am a graduate from Rock Mountain High in 1985. I'm here tonight to simply ask for a job, the job of mayor, and to acknowledge that you, all these members of the audience, and every stakeholder within the city of Rocky Mountain, both the Nash and Edgecombe Counties, are in fact my boss. I believe that we need work on public safety. I think we need to work on jobs with living wages. I believe that we need to fix our public education system, and I believe that we need to have a work ethic. I'm the man for the job. My experience will speak for itself through the years of volunteering, serving, serial entrepreneur, creating jobs, and understanding, and trying to build relationships with folks around everything. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Jones, and I am a candidate for mayor. I'm running to be your next mayor of Rocky Mountain. It sounds like the mic going in, but I was talking. I'm from South Rocky Mountain. Grew up in Woodford School, but mostly my childhood in the national center. Spent some time, I lived in Meadowbrook, I lived in Bob's Trail Park. But I've been around the city, and that around the city, that lived experience is what reflects my leadership in this community and space. Went to North Carolina A&amp;T State University where I majored engineering. And I've been committed to service ever since I walked across the stage after receiving my college degree. I have created an educational nonprofit that serves as Rocky Mountain schools, students, health care colleges, both literature programs and led to financial business, financial literacy programs. I've really been a candidate, or a citizen rather, who has been committed to moving this city forward. And I feel like the biggest indication of who any of us are going to be as elected leaders is evident in who we've been as citizens in this community. There aren't thousands of square miles to impact, there's 44 square miles in the city. Anything that meant enough to any of us to run for office, we should have been a resident there as citizens. And I hope to earn your support, and I look forward to the decision. Thank you.
My name is Robert O'Sullivan. Mayor of, uh, of County Eagle.
We move to the neighborhood where I pretty much grew up until I graduated. I went in the military. I wanted to be.
Thank you for coming through, David.
I just want to do something to get my wedding in United States. I was four years in the United States Navy.
People gotta walk through, he can block the light.
And then it took a time, I was getting ready to go to war, uh, in Desert Storm. So I made a conscious decision to get out. I came back home, Rocky Mountain. Came back home, I got a job with Avila, Avila Woods. I worked out there for about six years. And, uh, in process of working at Avila's, on third shift, I decided to go back to school. And I went back to school and became a licensed barber. I'm a barber, a barber by trade. And, uh, so in the process of finishing barber college, I, I killed my job at Avila's. Actually, I built up my clientele. In the process of me building up my clientele, I decided to step out and work for myself, be an entrepreneur. And in the process of that, I pretty much been cutting half, about 25 years here in the city of Rocky Mountain. A lot of people probably ain't hear, a couple of people know, um, kind of known around the city of Rocky Mountain. I also use to ride cab, so I kind of know Rocky Mountain area. I ended up, uh, going to church, I got filled with the Holy Ghost. In the process of getting filled with the Holy Ghost.
I don't know why, I don't know why he feel like he can block the aisle way. He cannot block the aisle way.
About what you're doing with the Holy Ghost is you're being do with powers from Ohio.
I'm fired up tonight. I'm happy to be in Rocky Mountain. I'm proud to serve the citizens of Rocky Mountain, Ward One and all of Rocky Mountain. I am Andre Knight, City Councilman for Ward One, and I'm seeking reelection. I ask you to vote for me tonight and continue to support this current council and the work that we have begun and that we continue to do. I seek reelection because we want to continue to improve our housing stock. We're not afraid to address old housing stocks. That's why we put programs in place to address those housing stocks. To lower utility bills. We weren't afraid to attack and to defeat the utility giants that was on our back for years and our people was oppressed. We, we came together and unified ourselves and stood together, and we defeated that burden that was on our shoulders. Diversity in management in our workforce. We can see a tremendous difference throughout management and throughout the workforce here in Rocky Mountain. And I'm so happy and excited tonight about the redevelopment where you're currently sitting now. The center of it all, a place where you can come and feel safe and work and have prosperity for all. This is our city. This is our beloved city. That's why we fight as hard as we can to make life better, the quality of life better for our citizens. So I ask you today to make a conscious decision to move this city forward, forward together, not one step back. I appreciate your support. God bless you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tarek Pittman. I am running for Ward One City Council. I am a resident of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I went to Rocky Mountain Senior High School here in Rocky Mountain. I was a three, uh, sport all-conference athlete, which led me to college, at Lewisburg College, to play baseball. I moved back here to Rocky Mountain because I saw a need for an upgrade in technology in this particular community. I own, I am the owner of Cool Beach Computer Repair located in downtown Rocky Mountain. I hope that you guys can take an opportunity and take a chance on vote for a new voice in our community. Now is the time. We've had 16 years of the same old, same old. Now is time for an opportunity to bring in some new, young, energetic, different mindset to the table. I represent one Rocky Mountain. I believe that we can all work together in the community, no matter what color you are, black, white. We can all work together in the community to bring resources, jobs to Edgecombe County, Rocky Mountain. I plan to focus on technology. I also plan to focus on, uh, housing. I support a strong housing bond so that we can actually fix up some of the blighted homes in the community, create a path of homeownership for the low-income residents. I also am the president of the Downtown Merchants Association here in Rocky Mountain. So I also want to focus on business development, bringing more businesses to the crossroads at 64, bringing some multicultural businesses down the bottom road, bottom road quarter. I also want to focus on community development, bringing us together as one community, going out in the community, talking to different groups whenever we come to an opportunity where there's an impasse in the community, there's no fear, and need to go out and speak with different residents throughout the city. I also care about public safety. I have a 68-year-old mother who has lived in Rocky Mountain for over 30 years, and it's a must-have that we get extremely tough on crime in this city. It's a must. Since 2003, we've had 154 murders, and we don't want any further. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
Hello, my brothers and my sisters. I'm River Richard Jordan. I reside in Ward Three. I am now your City Councilperson for Ward Three. I've enjoyed a great, great service with Ward Three as City Councilperson. In 1999, I had the privilege to work with the Clark Street Project that was having devastation from different types of crime and different types of things happening. I enjoy a rich relationship there, build a block counting and build a community engagement. It's been my history and my practice to build strong communities that build united cities. And here today, I'm asking you to continue that building through education, homeownership, equity, and community building. We have started a rich practice where our community organizations through our city support is becoming homeowners and becoming the opportunity to turn our blighted homes into homeownership and provide fresh, affordable food for our communities and build a therapeutic approach to crime and not a punitive approach to crime and dealing with the reentry program in our city. Thank you. I look forward to your support and continue to build in Ward Three. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nellie Richardson, and I also run it for Ward Three. I live in Ward Three. I am what they call an activist in Ward Three. I have lived in Ward Three since 19, since, um, 2015, when I moved back to Rocky Mountain. I first came to Rocky Mountain in 1980. I have worked the streets of Rocky Mountain since I got here. I don't know anything else to do to make my community safe for us. I do a lot of different things in the community. I have been very, very active in helping young men get off the streets and teaching them that they don't have to live the way that they live. A lot of times, we think that young men, because they get caught up. My name is Nellie Richardson. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. I thought my voice carried anyway, so I was trying not to speak into it too loud. But, um, I have lived in Rocky Mountain again since 2015. I first came to Rocky Mountain in 1980 and went back in 2010 after I had a stroke. But I have always been very active in Ward Three. I've lived in different parts of Ward Three. That's the only area I've ever lived in since coming to Rocky Mountain. I have always been active, um, and mainly in the streets because I come from the streets. And I show people that you don't have to live that way and that you can come out. A lot of times, we think that the young men that's out on the street cannot go any farther than where they are. And I proved that they can. I went back to school. I got a DED. I got two, two, uh, associate degrees. I went back and got my bachelor's. I went back and got my master's, and I am now working on my PhD.
Good evening. I'm Gwen Wilkinson. I'm running for City Council, Ward Three. I first want to thank Democracy North Carolina, and I want to thank the other eight organizations who put this forum together tonight. I've been in politics just about all my adult life. I've been in Ward Three for 20 years this December. I was a super delegate for a popular president back in 2012 at the convention in Charlotte. I've been a first vice chair of my state political party, chair of the Nash County Party, and chair of the first congressional district. I've sat on the MLK Commission for the state appointed by a former governor. And what I want to do for Ward Three, I want to work with residents, with the city, work with community code, and get our housing up to date. Too many dilapidated boarded-up houses. We cannot bring business and industry to Ward Three unless we fix the problem first. And I want to, I want our children to have a safe place to go home to when they get out of school. Going home to neighborhoods where all the houses or half of the houses are dilapidated and boarded up. It's just not right, and it's not a safe environment for our children. I will do what I can for Ward, Ward Three has been left out of the equation. I was just starting to see movement this year, and I don't know if that's because it's an election year, but we're just starting to see movement in Ward Three. And I will do what I can. I will be there. I will not disappear when the election is over, and you will have access to me, and I will be visible. Thank you for your time, and thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm TJ Walker. I'm the ward for City Councilman Candidate. First of all, I want to thank God for the opportunity to be a 27-year-old African-American male that can file for City Council Candidate and for the opportunities. I want to thank God, I want to thank my family for supporting me in this effort. Politics is wicked and rugged, but our God is the source of our strength. I am born and raised in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, 1022 Sycamore Street. I'm standing here today as a product of people saying that you cannot amount to anything being from the inner city. I'm standing here today saying that is a lie. I want to say that my platform is youth development, economic development, and partnering with local law enforcement. To look around in our city, I said a manager, she gave a speech the other day, revealed some interesting facts that the majority and the highest percentile of our population is youth 15 and under. But yet, we have a minor focus in our youth development in the city. That speaks volumes of where we are as a people. That is why it is important to have a young man to be able to diversify a council with age mentality, with perspective of a different mentality of generations of now and generations to come. Because there will be a little black boy, a little black girl, a little white boy, a little black girl that needs an opportunity, that needs programming, that needs someone to be able to say, "Listen, someone cares about me. Someone has a hope for my future, and not just in the home, but my city believes in me." Thank you. I'm TJ Walker, your Ward Four City Councilman Candidate. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elaine B. Williamson. I am a candidate for Rocky Mountain City Council, Ward Four. I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm also a grandmother. Thank you, y'all raise your hands, husbands, children. I have lived in the ward for the past 35 years. I didn't just move in the ward, I have lived in the ward. I have been actively involved in the city council since 1984. I have been part of the Rocky Mountain Planning Board for the past 10 years. So I have been actively engaged in the governmental of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I am also part of the Nash County Democratic Party. I'm the second vice chair. I'm also with them. So I have, I have been very engaged. My platform is workforce development. Right now, we have a lack of workforce development. So at, at the end of the day, when we get our people employed, it, there would be a trigger-down effect or a trigger-up effect where the crime will go down, homeownership will go up, and we will all have a more stable neighborhood. So the lack of workforce readiness is high priority because it will affect quite a few things in our city. I also, affordable housing, affordable homeownership. We would love for our people to own the ground that they live on. My name is Elaine B. Williamson. I am a candidate for Rocky Mountain City Council, Ward Four. And I will appreciate that when you vote, city, to vote, that you vote for me. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Cordell. My motto is, "Together as one." I'm a candidate for Rocky Mountain City Council, Ward Five. I'm running because I know that I can help the people in Rocky Mountain. But, but the people in Ward Five have to elect me. I'm running hard because I've knocked on thousands of doors and I have put, uh, material on thousands of mailboxes. I was born and raised in Rocky Mountain, on Happy Hill, 6th. I have a BS degree at Winston-Salem State University. I have a Master's degree at Virginia State University. I have taught over 21,000 years and 40 years' fame as a teacher, assistant principal, coach, and assistant educator. My platform would be jobs, housing, bringing in tax breaks for businesses to come to Rocky Mountain, and of course, to fight crime. If elected, I will be a candidate and a person that you can count on, that you can call me anytime, and I will try to solve any problems that you may have. Again, good afternoon to everybody and good afternoon to Ward Five. Oh, my name is Robert Cordell, and I want to be your candidate. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lodge Dalton. I'm a candidate for Rocky Mountain City Council, Ward Five. I'm a lifelong resident of Rocky Mountain. I'm in the family business. Been involved in family business actively four times since 1995. And I'm active in Rocky Mountain. I have been active in Rocky Mountain. I can tell you what I've done and what I am doing. What I have done is I've helped along with some, with other people. We did what's called Reach Out Rocky Mountain. $2.1 million raised in five years for Rocky Mountain nonprofits that helped many of us out here, our children, and education, and animals, and many others out there. The other thing that I've done, I've been involved as Ms. Williams with the Planning Board, but I've been on there for eight years. In addition, I serve on the state level on the North Carolina Rural Center and also for the Rural Infrastructure Authority. And that's for advocating for rural North Carolina, which includes the 88 county, which is National Edgecombe County. With the Rural Infrastructure Authority that I currently serve on, I've been appointed by both sides of the aisle. I brought in over a quarter of a billion dollars to, uh, to rural North Carolina. 10 million of that is, is here in National Edgecombe County. It's your tax dollars that I'm responsible for when I go there. What I'm, what I'm looking for is to represent Ward Five on the Rocky Mountain City Council. And part of my platform is, we're going to need to look at our aging infrastructure. This area that we're in, some of the original part of Rocky Mountain, we've got to fix the infrastructure here. I'm also looking for transparency. Transparency is the ideal way to operate. We have to do a better job here in Rocky Mountain with our leadership. And the other thing is community. When I say community, I mean for all of us to get together instead of talking at each other, we need to talk with each other. We need to hear from everybody. And so my time to her. Okay, thank you.
The question, the question, the question, the question, the question.
Question one, a ward candidate. The word gentrification carries dual connotations. What is your definition and how do you see gentrification impacting downtown and surrounding areas? Question one, this is a question for ward candidate. The word gentrification carries dual... Question four, can you hear me now again? Okay. The word gentrification carries dual connotations. What is your definition and how do you see gentrification impacting downtown and surrounding areas? Mr. Mike, you have 97 seconds.
First of all, I want to say that, uh, some of the candidates here address that the council hasn't done anything in the last 15 years, and we have done a lot in the last 16 years or more. Uh, gentrification is the plan of the rich.
Question one. The word gentrification carries dual connotations. What is your definition and how do you see gentrification impacting downtown and surrounding areas?
I just want to say, uh, the question that you asked us about gentrification, uh, city council is studying, uh, racial design. And one reason why we've fully adopted that plan is because we address, uh, gentrification. And so gentrification means that you have all your wealthy people moving into a community and changing the character of the community and displacing people that were currently in the community. Gentrification can have pros and cons depending upon what you want to see in that certain area that you're trying to develop. For the city of Rocky Mountain, gentrification, we do not want to see gentrification. We think, we know that downtown is for everyone, everyone. We want to see everyone work, live, and play in downtown. And so we want to see, uh, programs to help those mom-and-pop stores to continue to exist in downtown and not drive out those who have those mom-and-pop stores, not drive out those that currently live in downtown, uh, with, uh, when the property value, value increased and those people are being displaced. And so we want to see Rocky Mountain for all our citizens to be able to carry in properties in Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Can you believe everybody heard this tonight? I want to switch parts and think I do better than you.
Teflon, Teflon. Thank you. Uh, I just want to say first of all that I sit on the central city revitalization panel that played a huge role in developing the racial plan, and gentrification was discussed by the central city revitalization panel. If you look online, you can see the original racial plan, and you will see that we discussed gentrification along with, with this current council. Uh, what gentrification is to me is that when development, new development comes in a particular community, uh, and that development tends to hurt the surrounding, uh, lower-income communities. I, for one, uh, when sitting on the racial, uh, dealing with the racial plan, uh, I feel as though we should focus on growing and developing the communities that are around downtown so that any growth and development that happens in downtown can actually meet, uh, that, that growth and development that we're doing in some of those older communities that, that surround Rocky Mountain. It's extremely important that we continue to invest in small businesses downtown. I, of course, I've benefited from, as the owner of Cool He's Computer Repair, I've benefited from some of the council's work by, uh, uh, opening a business up in the Jefferson Block. I've been open for 10 years now, uh, but we need more. We need more ideas and more people to the table so that we can continue to grow and invest in small businesses in this community. Uh, I support, uh, minority and women-owned businesses, and I hope to continue to do that when I'm elected to serve as your councilman for Ward One. Thank you.
Certainly, as representing Ward Three, gentrification has had a lot of scary meanings for us, but I think that a bold and approach of having wealth coming into our community as well as training our community in what we have done with our different community groups in Ward Three as taking ownership of their community, uh, thanks to Sue Perry and, uh, the Atlantic Street Corridor Study and the Community Academy, and our community groups being trying to train how to get equity in their homes and own the homes in our communities so we can be a part of saying, who will come in our community and turn our community back into homeownership and not rent a property totally. So I think that when our communities are in control and our community doesn't know who's coming in, we can determine the growth and who will grow with us. Thank you.
I'm still Melanie Richardson, and I'm still a candidate, and I'm still a candidate for Ward Three. Um, gentrification for me hits home a lot because I am a byproduct of what happened in Washington, DC of gentrification. Um, what ended up happening was that people came in and they pushed us out. Um, and it was because of, to me, when you say the dual purpose, what it is is that the poor are pushed out as the upper class move in. And that's what gentrification really is. It's, it's, it's a way to push us out. And to me, in order to stop that, we make affordable housing that people can purchase, people can live there, even rent there at a, at a lower price so that when the upper class do move in, because they're coming, you know, we have to have the people that are already there grounded and prepared for what's coming. Because as this city change and evolve, it's going to happen. It's happening all over the United States. But we, as a community, have to be prepared to say, we're not going to let it affect us to that magnitude that it's affected a lot of people, which has caused homelessness to escalate around this United States.
To answer the question, gentrification is the remodeling and rebuilding of homes in, uh, in our neighborhoods. In Ward Three, you have to ask yourselves, how are we going to fix the abandoned boarded-up housing if we don't rebuild, if we don't remodel? But when, if I'm elected to represent Ward Three on the council, I plan to work with others, work with insurance companies, uh, work with the council, work with home, the residents of Ward Three for homeownership. You can remodel and refurbish and just put stipulations and ask builders or owners, when that rent is sky-high because they've just remodeled, we have to have laws in place to protect the seniors, to protect those already in the neighborhoods. People don't want to leave their neighborhoods, and I will fight to keep them there, but those abandoned boarded-up houses need to be remodeled, they need to be redone, or they need to be torn down. Thank you.
My understanding of gentrification is the displacement of low-income housing with higher-income housing. My issue with that, I understand, uh, kind of economic growth. My issue with that is who are the developers that are coming in in order to replace these low-income houses? How would that affect those that have been living in communities for years? Is there a plan in place for those that have been living amongst these communities? Because if we look at the communities that surround downtown, these are people that have been there all of their lives. So to us as a council, to a city, we're saying, we're fine with the economic growth of the city financially, but then we're also fine, on the other hand, saying, we're fine with grandmother Suzie and grandmother Maddie that has to get up, pack her bag, and find somewhere to stay. So we have to have a heart-to-heart, come to a consensus agreement and say, what is it that's more important? Is it our financial state as a city? Because understand, gentrification does not solve for us. It helps us out economically with growth, with finances. We have to have a heart-to-heart to say, what matters most? Our money or our people?
My understanding of gentrification is when developer comes in and changes the fabric and the social makeup of a neighborhood by forcing people with low income out. So how do we prevent that? We can, we can have rehab programs that help to keep the people home, fix up, keep their, uh, keep their qualifications so that they can reach eligibility, so they can easily qualify to get the grants and whatnot. Moving people from their place where they have been at for years, if, if puts them in a different home as they age, it's not healthy for them. And you also said something about downtown. Now, gentrification in the downtown area can beautify the city, and it will also bring in more funds because the tax base will increase. And by tax base increase, therefore revenue coming in, so the property value goes up. But we also need to realize that we do not want gentrification to be part of our community because we don't want to force people out of where they're at. So that's my meaning of gentrification.
My meaning of gentrification is when the upper-income residents buy condos, moving into, uh, downtown and moving the lower-income people out. Right here in Rocky Mountain, we do not need this at this particular time. We just need to give tax breaks so businesses can move in and people can popper, and we just need that, that tax break so businesses can move in and, uh, we can build businesses downtown Rocky Mountain and also, uh, at the 64th Cross.
I think we've heard several definitions of gentrification, and they're all very similar, displacement of, uh, low-income people, um, through bringing in, uh, improvement of housing stock and so forth. One, one thing that we need to keep in mind, and a lot of this came up, uh, after the event center was built, what we should have done, consider, is talking about this, acquire to building the event center. We're doing this after the fact. But one thing that we need downtown for the, for the event center and the downtown to be successful is we do need folks with money coming in, but we also need, uh, the mixed shoes in there. And we could do that by incentivizing builders and people to come in through zoning. So through zoning, if you wanted to build something, um, maybe we could, uh, lax the zoning laws a little bit so it would incentivize you to, um, maybe make denser, uh, housing, uh, in the area. There's things through that that can happen through the private market that doesn't necessarily take, um, grants and money from the citizens, we, the citizens who pay taxes to do that. We need to be conscious of that, but I think at this particular time, we're not near that, uh, point in time because we really need to work on getting folks in downtown. Now, not saying it won't happen, and we don't need to prepare for it in 10 years, but, uh, again, I think we should have thought about that when we did that, uh, with the event center.
Okay, next question was also for the mayor, this particular question. It's coming up now for all. If elected, how would you work to foster unity, full equality, and equity across the city groups, including city employees, residents in various geographical communities, people of different races or religion, and LGBTQ persons? This first question goes to Ward Three Councilman, Richard Stone.
I think the first thing we have to do is tell the truth about why we're where we are. And looking at, first of all, our city economics, that, uh, African-American population make up 67% of the Rocky Mountain population and only receive about 50% of the earned income in Rocky Mountain, which leaves a huge disparity in our city as far as that earned income. So I think that we need to try to look at, how do we consciously balance that process? And since that has, since we've seen some new movement in that process of, of promotions and different type things going on, that, that, that is becoming a reality, and as, as a city councilperson, I would continue to be conscious and sensitive to that movement by policy procedures. The other one is that I've been doing all my life is with, uh, the, uh, affordable food and housing with the LGBTQ community and unifying our city through a practice of a fresh, affordable food for all of our communities. And lastly, what they said, if we just recognize the, the whole process around the theme of the sanitation strike, we must tell the truth about how we restore that, that group of people.
Time is up. Thank you.
In response to that question, I just believe that if we stop showing so many biases and we, and we forget that we've been so divided and start working closer together and that people stand on their own merits, that mean that if each person go back to school, and when you have a position, you should be qualified to be in that position. Because a lot of times, we've had people working in positions that were not qualified. They were just placed there because of the color of their skins. And, and I have to say it like that. Um, but now, we, we need to all stand on our own merit. If you want a position, you need to go to school and get an education to stand in that position. Uh, and that might sound hard in truth, but that's the only way we're going to bring equality and stop dividing our city down the middle. We need to all stand up and be accountable and forget all this other stuff that we've been doing for a lot of years. That's why I went back to school, so I couldn't say, oh, well, you stopped me from getting where I need to be.
First of all, to foster unity, uh, equality and equity, it starts with our leaders. You cannot be a leader, and I don't mean just leaders on the council, leaders in the community, uh, pastors, uh, community people that we look up to. You cannot keep dividing our city. And one way to heal that is for the leaders to come together and call it like it is, but address the issue. You don't address a person's race or the color of a person's skin when they come to the city council meeting. You address what is coming out their mouth and you address that issue. Now, sure, there are some disparities in our city, and it does, you don't have to have blinders on to see it. Just unfortunately, it's in the African-American community, and that's where I plan to focus most of my energies. It doesn't take a blind man to see that the Edchcombe County side is the one that is suffering the most. We have dilapidated boarded-up houses on Nash County side also, Ward Three is split between Nash and Edchcombe County. So we have two counties, two that we have to look after. And like I said, I don't have blinders on, so I would fall through unity, equity, and equality because any person in leadership, regardless of the color of their skin, can look and see where the need is. If a leader looks where the need is, you fix the problem regardless of the color, it'd be the same if it was a white community. We look at the need and you fix the need. That's a leader. Thank you.
Okay, uh, for those here in the back, can you hear me now? Want to make sure that everyone can hear us in the back, um, to answer and repeat the questions. If elected, how would you work to foster unity, full equality, and equity across all city groups, including city employees, residents in various geographical communities, people of different races or religions, and LGBTQ persons?
Unity is needed all across the city. Divided, divided when we are not united, but together we stand, and divided we fall. So we have to be able to, our city, we have a 67% majority, a black city, that's the truth. Uh, we do need to have and be able to reflect that within leadership and within, uh, different city groups as far as being able to have unity, uh, within city groups and city officials. I'm a member of Omega Phi Phi fraternity incorporated. We have a serious vetting process before you join our fraternity. And I'm...
And I believe that is able to be able to find an essential person that can lead that leadership. So I believe our vetting process in order to provide jobs for our leaders and provide jobs for our city, people needs to have, we need to have a serious vetting process to make sure that not only are they qualified, not only do they have people's best interests at heart, but they also understand how to work with people, how to be professional, and how to be transparent. Thank you.
So how do we foster unity? I believe we start with a open line of communication. We have to talk to get to know one another. We have to understand each other. Unity is, is a unit of togetherness. So how do we come together? Let's talk about whatever situation we got going on. We don't have to fight about everything. And in forest for these city employees, let's continue their open door policy that's in place right now. So anytime any issues going on with the city and the employees, be able to go and talk to that supervisor, that leader. And also, we are all, regardless of our race, regardless of our faith, regardless of our central preference, we are all created by the same thought and we need to always respect one another. So I feel that unity starts by just talking, by communicating, getting to know one another. You know how much sometimes with somebody that you don't love don't know? Get to know them. Talk about their culture. Because see, we're all different in some way, but we're more than same, more than we are different. So I believe we have to start with an open line of communication.
The Third President of the United States, Tom Jefferson, said, "All being created." United we stand, divided we fall. If elected, I will work off toward working together, equality. Making sure everybody have a fresh shot at job, a fresh shot of being prosperous in our city. We need unity. We need to work together. So everyone in the Rocky Mountain area would prosper.
As a Rocky Mountain city councilperson, I first would like to say, you lead by example. You know, if you, if you want respect from the citizens that you're representing, you gotta show respect. And so that's the first thing that we need to do as leaders, is we gotta show respect to everyone. In addition to, as my opening statement, is we need to communicate. We've gotta communicate with each other because I think someone said it earlier. You know, you're not gonna know about me and I'm not gonna know about you until we, we have a conversation instead of talking at each other. We've gotta talk with each other. And as it, as it applies to equity and treating everyone with the same, treating everyone the same, it's just simple. I mean, we learned that as children. Why don't we put it in practice as adults? Sometimes you go to city council meetings or you go out in public and you get on social media, we act like a bunch of children, but quite frankly, children act better than we do. So we just need to start treating each other with respect.
I want to speak truth to power. When we first opened up this forum, they read a set of rules. A lot of things that were said is out of feelings and emotions, but we haven't had a chance to rebut anything that was said that was not true. To say that council members or person have not done anything in sixteen years is a slap in the face to Angela Bryan, Ruben Blackwell, Lamont Wiggins, Andre Knight, Chris Miller, W B Bulb, Tom Rogers, and David Combs. You can look around this city and see development. Look around this city to see jobs coming to Edgecombe side and Nash, Nash County side. You can look around this city and see housing development. When it comes to, people talk about unity until you get into a boardroom and decide where the infrastructure is gonna be developed and where a resource is gonna be put in undeserved communities and in low-income communities. So I, I think that it needs to be a process where things are said, that things need to be rebutted so the truth can come out. And I just think that in order to have unity, you got to show unity. If you, you must be fair to everyone across the board and not just have smoking, uh, smoke and scream, but just have the truth that you would be able to tell everyone.
Thank you for the light. Be respectful.
Thank you. I grew up in close to house. When I was five years old, I went to Bradley Elementary School. When I went to the kindergarten, I met a kid, a white kid, at five years old. We sat side by side with each other from two totally different backgrounds. We became fast friends. I would go over his house in the afternoon. First time in my life I saw a two-parent household was from this family. They treated me as if I was one of their own. We had difficult conversations about race and who we are as people and who we are as individuals. We had those conversations at five years old. There's no way at forty-five years old that I can look at another individual because he's different from me or has, or the color of his skin is different from me and, and think that that person knows, knows more than me or, or that person is offended by me. I don't, I, I don't walk around every day fearing no man. I don't care what color you are. I'm in technology. In my mind, I'm smarter than anybody. People of all colors have to come to me for answers. So I'm not offended by anybody, no man or anyone. I represent a one Rocky Mountain movement where we all can come together and work together. There is no African-American business in this city that can survive unless they get business from all different types of people within this community. So what we need to do and what we should do as a community, as an elected official, I don't mind going to talk to LGBTQ community members, uh, anyone in Nash County. To open up your dialogue.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this event is to get responses. We didn't, we didn't just to be behind. Two, we just want to get your, your feelings on different topics. So just keep in mind, but at the same time, be respectful of the topic.
Well, I want to pretty much say about unity, equality, we pretty much wouldn't know what the word is. But y'all are good in every color. We're multicultural people, but I believe we can come together in unity and in power. And the Lord told me, he said, that, he just spoke to me, he said, let me, let him do it. We can sit here and say all we want to say, but if you got love in your heart, we can do it.
Yes, so again, my name is Kevin Jones. And what I'll do as your mayor to foster unity in this city. And not, not to be in any way arrogant, but I'll be myself. I represent the life that I've lived throughout the city. You know, I alluded to the fact that I've lived in South Rocky Mountain, Meadow Brook, and I've gone to, I've lived in Cobb's Trailer Park, and I've lived all over the city. So I've had people from all over the city, four and two leagues, and, and they have made the man that you see before you. You look at my campaign kickoff, I mean, it's on Facebook, pictures are out there. I literally had guys that I grew up with in South Rocky Mountain, been in county jail. And I had black guys and I had little white women who served on county commission there. And so I mean, that, that perspective is what I'll do. I'll be a mayor who sits in Oakwood, Hazelwood, or Candlewood, get your tables. And I'll take the perspective from places like Oakwood and go to Candlewood and say, you know what? This is where the commonalities are and these are where the differences are. I'll be that person. And when it comes down to the Nash, Nash County vibe, which is a very real and tangible thing, no matter how many people try to deny it. Quite frankly, I, it comes down to who you know and who you love, your people that you know and who you love. And I will, I have people all over this city who, who have poured into me, who love me and I love them. That's what it comes down to, white people, black people, from West Street Crossing to West Mount, all over. And when it comes to that county divide, you know, somebody asked me yesterday when I was knocking doors, they said, what would your, what would you do? I said, my wife, who grew up on fifteen, ten Old Wilson Road, she won't let me forget Edgecombe County. So I can forget it with y'all, so when I get home, I can't forget it with her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, my name is Sandy Robertson. I am a candidate for mayor. I believe that people, persons with different temperaments, talents, and convictions represent a diversity that can in fact be and should be our strength as a community. When I look at unity, I believe that it really starts with relationships. And that's been alluded several times in many people's conversations. And all that is, is having a relationship. That means give and take. That means transparency. That means accountability. That means that I'm opening myself to you. So I believe that we as a community need to look at ourselves and be honest and have an honest thought. How do we create an equity that exists? Does that equity look like opportunity? Is there a fair opportunity for everybody to be successful, to succeed? You know, I don't pretend to know all the answers, but I do pretend, not pretend to care. I do care. I do care about our community and the relationships that exist. And I believe that's what we need to be focused on. And I believe that's how we attain that. That's how we build bridges. That's how we create opportunity for everybody. Every stakeholder in City Rocky Mountain needs to be at the table, needs to be able to eat a full meal at that table.
I want to talk about, we're talking about fostering unity between the multifaceted community that we have. It's not about counting how many Asian friends, how many white friends, how many black friends, how many friends that are in the LGBTQ community. It's about seeing people for who they are, the heart of individuals. I've been a church child my life. And one thing I know about unity is it first starts with love. We have to begin to love our neighbors. We have to love ourselves first. That is the first step to unity if we want to see this community go. But if we spend time looking at differences, we ain't gonna get anywhere. And I think we found ourselves doing that for too long. When we sit at the table, we've got to see somebody that has shared visions, goals, and ideas. And that is, I want to be, I want to have a life that's full of joy, a life full of happiness, a life full of respect, a life where for somebody treats me good just because, just because. But I, I just hope that we will get out of this idea that unity is counting how many black and white friends that we have. Well, that shows that we are too far from getting to where we need to be in a community. And as the mayor, I believe that we gotta have serious, strong conversations with each and every citizen. We do that through city council. We do that through many programs. And my five minutes up, and I'll be respectful of the time.
Question four, from an old candidate. Other than city council meetings, when and how do you plan to be available for the citizens that you will represent in the state? Question three, an old candidate. Name the most important challenge you see facing Rocky Mountain and what strategy would you use to address this challenge? Just ask for your first few votes.
The most important is, is... The most important challenge that I see in Rocky Mountain would probably be, uh, I'm gonna say, I believe that we need to rebuild the people first. Build the people, give them decent wages or incentives, where they'll be willing to go to work instead of being out in the streets and not working. We want to, I, I believe if we build the people, build up the people, the broken parts, if we rebuild the people, and that, that would be the challenge, us, us coming together in unity, love, joy, peace. If we can build the people, rebuild the people first, then the people be willing to get up and go to work. We want working adults here in the city of Rocky Mountain. Your concerns and your issues are important to the city of Rocky Mountain. But if we can work together, make forward progress, and move forward and not look back at our past. But if we can build, build the people, I believe that we can have, make, uh, forward progress.
Thank you for the question. The most important issue facing Rocky Mountain, I think is the most immediate one, which is crime. The crime in our community, it affects more people than those who are on the giving end or receiving end of a, of a book. It affects families. It affects people in the community. I can't tell you how many people are scared to go anywhere after dark. I can't tell you how I have to strategize my canvassing of neighborhoods because I know that on Holly Street, people will not open the door just within two hours of, of, of dark time. And so there is a real issue with our crime. And so, and I'm doing something to address it as your next mayor. From day one of my camp, from day one of my, uh, being sworn in, being mayor, I'm gonna commit to, towards zero initiative, which will focus on those things that really get us to where we are today with our street crime. Within the first hundred days, I'm gonna form, I'm committed publicly to forming a commissioner reentry. Because the reality is, is that a lot of these young men, they're, they're largely young men who commit these crimes. They have gone, they have served time before. They have been offenders and they came back out to the same situations that made them go in. We have to get, get to that. And then a summer job program for our young people, that's needed. I'm committing even if it's two kids, I'm committing to two kids who exist in our city's margins to by twenty twenty, summer twenty twenty, as your mayor, I'm gonna have a summer job program in place. And I'm gonna use, uh, to leverage my relationships to move forward in the future.
Again, I'm Sandy Robertson, also a candidate for mayor. I couldn't agree with Kevin anymore. Of the polls that I have run and asking each and every one of you several times through the course of the campaign, without question, safety, public safety is the number one. For spots, forty-nine percent, very high. And clearly, you can't address crimes in back, you can't out-arrest it. So you've got to talk about public education. You've got to talk about how do you equip people to be able to take advantage of opportunities within the community. You can't talk about fixing safety without creating jobs and economic opportunity. Crime goes hand in hand with property more often than not. So I think usually with a single large issue, it's very difficult to find a senior as such. I think we have to look at it in terms of paying up a whole filter of items that we have to address. And it's a bleeding onion layer. And I think that's part of the conversation. I think we have to also take action to make that happen. And that starts with, you know, how do we look at our budget? How are we allocating our resources? How do we make that happen? Again, you know, you can't out-arrest yourself from many, many, many problems. There are many, many facets to it more than I can answer in ninety seconds. But, but I would just suffice it to say, crime clearly is the number one concern for everybody in City Rocky Mountain. And we have to address it using the tools that we have in our book, Public Education and Jobs.
Was the greatest challenge facing Rocky Mountain a kid? You cannot do that as a thing with it. As you may have heard, we talked about crime and understanding that one life lost in Rocky Mountain is one life taken, that we certainly have to do something about that. As a community, we have to do something about it. That is changing the mindset of individuals that we have in our communities. Like to go back to that love situation. Uh, but certainly as we look at other challenges, there's a great challenge of misinformation in our community. And that is why, one, I believe that a city council meeting certainly should be broadcast live on television because there is an effort throughout our community to intentionally mislead people, mislead people about the progress that is happening in our community, and mislead people about the opportunities that exist. There's over three thousand jobs available in our city right now. Thirty-four hundred more jobs are on the way. The question is, are these people ready? Do they have the workforce development skills day one to get those jobs? Do we have issues for substance abuse? How do we ensure that we capitalize or have resource available to help people with drug addiction? That is real. How do we talk to employers to give people second chance? Because the reality is, we can't change history, we're trying to change future choice. Because the reality is, we can't change history. We're trying to change future choices. So as we look at things in our community, we cannot singularly point out one individual thing. I would say that is the, the top pressing issue, but we've got to collectively work on everything because some issues might be saying, some issues maybe, how do I get some more money in my pocket? So every house has an issue. We got to meet everybody where they are.
Okay, the next question is for the wards. Other than city council meetings, when and how do you plan to be available to the citizens you will represent if elected? This first question goes to Ward Four candidate TJ Watt.
If elected, I'm planning to be able to have a way and means of communication with all residents within the ward. Uh, we have associations within all of our wards and... We have associations amongst all of the communities within the ward. And I believe it's imperative as a city council representative that we attend those meetings to be able to hear the needs of the community because it's one thing to sit amongst your council peers, but to be able to feed within the community. Also, I plan to be able to be engaged with our people via technology, via mail, however we need to communicate to make it happen. And I will always be available, understanding that I am a city servant, understanding that I'm a representative of the ward. They will not be able to say TJ was not around. They will not be able to say we could not contact him. They will not be able to say he did not return our calls, our emails. I will make sure, understanding that I am a servant, not understanding, not respecting my, myself first, but making sure that I respect the citizens within the ward in which I serve. Thank you.
Repeat the question, please. Other than, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Other than city council meetings, when and how do you plan to be available to the citizens you will represent if elected?
Thank you. When elected, I plan to participate in the organized community groups that we have. Each, each ward has group organization. So I plan to participate in all of them. I also plan to have events that I can host, you know, throughout the ward. You know, um, and then we can do something like newsletters. So I plan to stay engaged with the community, um, find out their needs, and then address the needs. So participate in the organized community groups, host events. Those are my plans.
My name is Robert Cordell. For those of you who have just come in. I file for city council ward five on July nineteenth. At ten o'clock, it was two hours before Friday. Since then, I've had all kinds of calls about all kinds of things from all citizens, especially in their ward. And I told them, uh, Mr. Tom Rogers is their councilman. I'm just a candidate. But if elected, I will contend to receive the calls I know I want to get. I will answer the best my ability. But the most important thing, I would probably have some, some sort of a community meeting for people who, uh, do not come to council meetings. And I will share with them things that I can legally share with them. I will, um, be a technology savvy to some of the, uh, people who, uh, want to communicate technologically. And I will just be available, uh, to, uh, my voters. Thank you.
I'm Lodge Dawbridge, candidate for Ward Five, City Council. Uh, I think some of the basic things that you do is you meet, you meet with your constituents. You have, uh, quarterly meetings if, if possible, uh, in, in various places throughout the ward. One thing to start with for the entire city is, if it's part of the transparency piece, is we need to televise live the city council meetings and the rest of the meetings. Uh, that, that's the easiest way. And record those. Uh, but, and then also have your telephone and email and answer the, uh, answer the calls and answer the emails as, as people, um, ask them. I will say, uh, current councilman Rogers, he's been very responsive when I, uh, reach out to him and I plan on continuing that when elected as, uh, city council ward five.
One of the things, uh, I would like to, to implement, and the current council have been discussing this, is constituent services. Uh, this council, which I'm included, has taken on a lot. A lot of council meetings, special call meetings, uh, different committee meetings. And a city council position is a, I'll say part-time or voluntary job. And when you are an effective council member, you just not, you just only don't receive calls from the, the ward that you represent. But you are representative of all of Rocky Mountain. And therefore, uh, we need to do, and what we have in the budget and plan to do, is implement, uh, constituent service that can help us to continue to communicate in an effective way. Uh, a lot of times we are bombarded with phone calls, emails, uh, even visits. And, uh, if you have a full-time job and you are just part-time, it becomes overwhelming. And to be effective, you need staff to help you communicate with that, uh, district meetings, ward meetings, uh, quarterly meetings, and, uh, other meetings that we have, uh, currently have in Rocky Mountain. Uh, not just, uh, uh, every second and fourth Monday, but other meetings that we have throughout City of Rocky Mountain. So we need that constituent service. Thank you.
Thank you. I call it the boots-on-the-ground approach. Uh, one of the things that I've heard a lot while knocking on doors in Ward One is the absence of the, of council member. Uh, so, uh, I've had, for the last fifteen years, I've had a, uh, internship program with North Carolina Western, uh, training students on how to, uh, go out and work for us, uh, get hands-on training in CIS program. So my two students that I got, uh, this year, I challenged them with the task of creating an app that you can download to your smartphone and that is a Ward One app. And through that app, uh, they can communicate with media and councilmen, uh, they can communicate with each other within the community, uh, if they're holding, having events, if there's crime, if there's trouble that's going on in a certain section of the community, they can, they can put that information out. And once the information is out, it'll come to me or to the neighborhood president. The neighborhood president role is very key to, uh, uh, there's, there's a part of, I want to be able to manage that really, really tight. I want that to be a position where that individual knows what's going on in the ward, communicates effectively with the individuals that's in the ward, and communicates with me as the Ward One representative. So those are the things that we're, that we're currently working on. Uh, whether I win or not, I think that app is important to, to the community so that they can communicate back and forth with their council member, share ideas, share events, uh, talk to each other about crime in certain sections of a particular ward. And we just want to step it up a notch from a technology standpoint. Thank you.
Certainly, I've enjoyed a rich opportunity of working with our community, uh, Ward Three leaders and our community groups. Uh, we have had rich meetings, uh, where we are meeting every month. Uh, some of the things that we have said that we would step up to do, and we're doing it now, we're including our faith base in our meetings, faith bases, opening churches, so we can have our community meetings. Our next step has been that we are inviting corporations and community stores in our community to come together to talk about the concerns of Ward Three and how we address them together. So I intend to keep this going. And as Councilmember Knight said, that the city has, and the city council members have been very progressive in talking about how we serve our community in a better way. I plan to continue to do that. Thank you.
Uh, I plan to stay available to the city's citizens in Ward Three as the way that I do now. I hit the streets. I've been on the streets. I, I can tell you that what y'all consider bad boys, I know most of them. Um, and the reason I know them is because two years ago, at the sixteen-hundred block of, of, uh, Hart Road Street, a young man was murdered. And two weeks later, I had a block party there. And it started killing a community. And I believe in order to be available, you can't be scared to go into where I live at. Um, and we know that branch, average, branch streets and streets like that are very, very, people are scared after dark. But I live there, and I have to go home to there. And I'm not gonna be scared to go where I live. So I believe it to be the city council person for that board, I really need to be hands-on. I know that we have different community leaders, but if the leaders are out of touch with what's going on, then you can, you can do what you want. But if you don't actually get in there and put your hands on these people, we will continue to have the crime and the killing and everything else that goes on in Ward Three, and the neighborhood will stay dilapidated. We have to fight to make it better.
First of all, let me say, I was born and raised in northeast and southeast DC. I've been in some of the fattest neighborhoods you could go in. And yes, I've been on Hart Road, and I've been on Clark, and I was on Hill Street, uh, I think the day after there was a stabbing there. So Gwen Wilkins is not afraid to go into any community, and I went there by myself. Um, insofar as, uh, how I plan to be available, I have a strategic plan I have at home that I, in case I am fortunate enough to serve the citizens of Ward Three, I plan to start a Facebook page for Ward Three. I plan to do a newsletter quarterly for those citizens who do not do Facebook, because everyone is not in social media. But I, I plan to do that. And insofar as the community meetings, I have attended some, but I need to, I would like to encourage our community and all the citizens to attend these meetings. When I go, there are only six to ten people at these meetings. And I know where one or two are gathered in our name, we can get stuff done. But there needs to be more participation in these community meetings. So yes, I plan to be available. And I tell you this, everybody has my number. If they don't, they know someone who does. I've had the same cell phone number probably for ten or twelve years. And so if you don't have it, it's on my cards outside. I will be available. I will be accessible. I text, I email. So thank you.
Question five, for all candidates. Rocky Mountain, MSU, Metropolitan District area, has the highest unemployment and underemployment rates in North Carolina. How will you address this economic challenge in our struggling community?
If you notice my style when I give up answer questions, I'm short, concise, correct question. I was taught that by Dr. Thomas Law, one of my instructors at the University of State University. As my colleagues here elaborate, I just go straight to the point. I'm going straight to the point of this question. Job, job, and more job. Tax incentives for businesses come to Rocky Mountain to create jobs for our citizens. Thank you.
Again, I'm Lodge Dawbridge, candidate for Ward Five. Um, the, the jobs in the MSA, well, first of all, the Carolina Gateway Partnership, which I happen to serve on, which brings economic development incentives and recruits businesses to the area, both Nash and Edgecombe County. Part of, one of the things that we're doing right now in conjunction with the City of Rocky Mountain, Edgecombe County, Nash County, and the different cities, is working with the community colleges, even especially with the tire plank coming and cornering, to train some of the workforce because it's training. As a small business person, one of the biggest things, the biggest challenges that you have is we, we have a lot of great employees that I've worked with over the years, but a lot of people are retiring. Coming in, in the backside of that, replacing those folks has been very difficult because the training has not been there. The soft skills are not there. We know that. So we need the training. I'm out there giving jobs every day. And I know what it takes for people to get a job. The big thing that everyone needs to get a job is you show up for work and you work harder than the next person. And, and it's pretty simple because there are jobs out there available for people.
You're Rocky Mountain, you're Rocky Mountain, MSU, Metropolitan District area, has the highest unemployment and underemployment rates in North Carolina. How will you address economic challenge in our struggling community?
Thank you. Unemployment and underemployment. Well, based on the numbers that we currently have, um, over three thousand, um, jobs is already here available, over thirty-five hundred is counted through the grant program that we have now, through Gateway Partnership, through the, um, Carolina Gateway Partnership, there are plenty of positions out there. There are community colleges, eight of them, including Nash and Edgecombe, who have programs. The Manufacturing Institute, the Advanced Manufacturing Institute, will train people to get a job. There's a ninety-six hour training. NC Work will also help fund that training for people who, uh, 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 can't afford it. So there are funds out there to help. There are training out there to help. And at the end of training, employers will be sitting to interview certain people. So there's, there's, right now, people just need to be preparing themselves. Because preparation meets opportunity, there's gonna be a success story. And then as far as for the other employment, maybe there needs to look at maybe some career change. So there's great possibilities out there. Thank you.
As it pertains to unemployment, underemployment, people not being able to have employment, we have to look at what's causing people not to have jobs. Uh, I do understand that our community colleges offer training, but I believe it would be more efficient and more, uh, successful and accessible if we have job training hubs within our communities. Uh, we cannot expect people to be, uh, engaged with our community college. Uh, we cannot, we have to be able to offer resources and say, we are making an effort to help our citizens as much as possible. Now, if our citizens say, hey, look, we don't want to be able to, uh, receive the help you're offering, that's on them. But as a city, we have to be able to make sure that we have accessible job training hubs in all of our communities that are lacking employment. As far as jobs that are coming, again, we have to be able to train people, not only for jobs that are coming, but jobs that are already here. There are already jobs that are vacant. So why are those jobs so vacant? We have people that need to fill up. We have to make sure that we're doing our, our job as a city to be able to have training hubs within our communities. Thank you.
I agree. We need workforce training for just about a lot, quite a few people. People graduate high school, don't have the means or the funds to go to the community college. We need people that can help them get in community college so that they have a trade. But people, let's not fool ourselves. We have a high crime area here in Rocky Mountain. What business is gonna come to Rocky Mountain with the crime like it is? And we need the affordable housing. We fix the crime, we fix the housing. It's like the domino effect. We fix that, then we can work with Carolina Gateway Partnership, and that's what I pledge to do. Work with Carolina Gateway Partnership and even the North Carolina Department of Commerce to bring jobs to our city, but we... Commerce to bring jobs to our city, but we have to fix the problem at the root first. Thank you.
As far as it goes with unemployment and underemployment, because I am a person of action, um, in my ward, I am about to open a business and hire felons. Because I believe that because my ward has a ward that is so full of felons, they can't get jobs. You know, and trying to work with someone to help them get those expenses done and things like that is very important. You know, we can't just talk about what we're gonna do, it's time to do something. Because we, we have crime because nobody's doing anything. If we put jobs in that ward, and I'm not talking about all of Rocky Mount, I'm talking about War III. I'm talking about where everybody's hungry and struggling. We have some sections that are not, but when you look at the big bulk of it, they're struggling. I know, because I don't make with so much, but I have people that knock on my door and say, Ms. Nellin, can you help me? My rent is overdue. And I go to other people in my ward and we put five, ten dollars together to get somebody's rent paid. That's how we help. We, we help them and stop talking about it. Do it.
First, the echo of what people said, but I do wanna talk about success story. War III do have the brother factor that's on Pid Street. And through the community organizations and faith-based partnerships, they are hiring people out of War III that can ride their vows if it's the work. And they've hired a young lady that, uh, have been there for two years. She had some growth problems when she got there, but as of today, she's a, she's a supervisor there and she's a homeowner in War III. It is in War III and we can turn it around. We're putting affordable food and, and gardens in War III where the hospital and other people will purchase these foods. We do have faith faith that is opening up their churches. We just have a young lady to start a business, a call center in Tarboro today. We have people from War III that went to Word Tavern that could thrive to put applications in for that job. War III is on the move going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I sit on the Baskerville School Community Board. One thing that, uh, I, I went one summer to Hossland knocking on doors in the community, uh, telling young people that, uh, you need to sign your child up for kindergarten. One thing that I saw in doing so is that the mental health of individuals in our community is, is, is one thing that is, is harming us. These young people really, really need help and resources to learn how to be parents, to learn how to go out and seek job training. They're giving up early and the responsibility of that is falling on us. And secondly, I have a vision for Rocky Mount. I'm towards to be known as something when it comes to employment and I have to be biased in this, and that's something is technology. I feel we, we need a, a, a technology resource center in our community, but we can start now to teach young people to think differently. Apple calls me every, no, uh, 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 May or June and says, hey Terry, who do you have? Or yours Carolina Wesley that you can, that we can give an opportunity to. Microsoft calls me, a young lady from Nashville works for Microsoft now, making eighty thousand dollars a year. If we can do that in our community and focus on technology and teach young kids how to, how to, uh, dive in robotics, how to dive in program, building programs and building game consoles and learning to trade in the process, then we can attract some companies into our community and we can provide opportunities for these kids in the future. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, we are learning a lot this evening. How y'all doing this evening? We appreciate you all coming out, but guess what? We got a little more to go, so just be patient and enjoy all the information we're learning this evening.
The MSA may say that now, but we are on the uptick. Uh, through the visionary of the Edgecombe County Commissioners, many, many years ago, they bought the land in Kingsborough, and we see jobs coming here to Rocky Mount. We have had several jobs announced through the Carolina Gateway and the city of Rocky Mount. We are doing some of those, the very things that some of those candidates just mentioned. We have resource centers, we have the Wilford Resource, we have OIC that do youth and development training. We work with community college, uh, both Edgecombe and Nash Community College to train our employees. We have to paint our own picture and tell our own success story. If people don't want to see Rocky Mount success, then all you hear are the bad things. But there are some very good things coming to Rocky Mount. Uh, the, the resale, uh, uh, in Edgecombe County, the sale tax is on the uptick, uh, twenty-five percent, uh, more so than, uh, Nash County, uh, when you look at goods and service being sold. So we have some positive energy in Rocky Mount. We are, what, the things that we do well, we need to continue to do well, continue to support, support our youth and support our, uh, adults that need to be retrained for those jobs that are coming here. So I just wanna paint a positive picture about Rocky Mount and that there are, it's a brighter future and things are coming, jobs are coming to this city. Thank you.
First of all, I believe in the power of the word. Meaning, unemployment. It needs to take un, o, for, important because of the power of a word. We have power in our mouth. Un means unjob, unemployment. Are you there? So we need to have unemployment officers where people would be willing to go, oh, they can go on Facebook, use technology, and look for a job. If people wanna work, from teenagers, like I said earlier, we need working. When you're young, I know I was motivated enough to go cut grass, wash cars, set, deliver newspapers. If you wanna work, you can work. Other than maybe people that may have a criminal record, and I hope that doors open up for them where they will be able to go to a regular job, that, that industrials will hire you, not based upon maybe their color or their past or criminal record, but that they will be given another opportunity to start over with a, with a decent job.
It's unemployment, underemployment. Uh, first, I wanna say that there is a huge section of a capable workforce who cannot find work because of decisions they made when they were eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old. And if any of us working people in here were able to those stupid decisions we made when we were twenty or nineteen or eighteen, none of us would have jobs. And my, my, my commission or reentry would tackle that head on. Uh, it's no job, it's, underemployment exists here in this city. And when it comes to underemployment, there are, there's crime, it breeds crime because people are less likely to commit crime if they have to get anywhere to work anymore. The crime forces people out of the city, they take their children with them, dollars follow the child, and so that completes our school of resources. That also removes a capable workforce to be here to be trained for the industry we do have coming. And what does that do? That makes it harder to recruit industry because the first thing businesses are gonna do when they are recruiting, thinking about coming to Rocky Mount or to, to Atlanta, Georgia, or to Baltimore, Maryland, their board of directors are gonna go to Google and look at, and Google Rocky Mount. And they're gonna see the crime, they're gonna see the distrust among government, they're gonna really see a picture that is painted that doesn't reflect our true tax bill. So I'm gonna work and take a comprehensive approach and not just talk about job, 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 I'm gonna get to the root of the issue.
Well, the rhythm's there. We have a six percent unemployment rate, yet people cite that we have three thousand open positions. The Gateway Partnership, you know, provides data that suggests that we have as many as twenty thousand jobs that commute into Rocky Mount and yet they leave. So I think we have to study and really understand, how do we administer and how do we create opportunities for the six percent of the population? Is it as simple as perhaps a study that, um, you know, poverty in rural areas, I was just reading recently suggests, is it as simple as the single common cause for a lot of retraining, uh, opportunities being missed, transportation and child health care? Just those two simple things. Is that the population we need to reach to? Do we need to find programs that are addressing those items? Is it that we have a reentry issue? Is it that we have a skills issue? Is it perhaps that we need to recruit other jobs in which we have folks that can be employed? I, I've spent a lifetime in entrepreneurial pursuits. I have created thousands of jobs, literally, um, in, in multiple states. Uh, I have a Rolodex of folks that I'm willing to call, put on the line to try to recruit jobs to Rocky Mount. But I'll suggest this perhaps to this audience, and it's certainly not the total solution, but just simply merely a, an indication of my willingness to think maybe outside the box. I believe that we should consider becoming a logistics center.
Wanna talk about, uh, where we are. And of course, I talked to Mr. David Behrs today, and there is in fact over three thousand jobs available in our community. I wanna talk about the fact that when we look at our community and they say there's so much crime that industry and business is not coming. Well, I read a couple of weeks ago, like years ago, success is coming to our community. We see a tire store being built beside Taco Bell in Rocky Mount, North Carolina. Things are happening in Rocky Mount. That is the reality. There are new opportunities for people every single day. And as we talk about what these issues are for our choices early on in life, those things we have to tackle day in and day out. At the same time, we should have the same spirit of entrepreneurship. How do we invest in small businesses in Rocky Mount, North Carolina? How do we take advantage of the opportunity zones that exist right here in Rocky Mount, North Carolina so that people, when faced with those challenges, can become their own employee and begin to employ others? So there's a lot of things that we can do to address a lot of the issues that we're talking about, but there's no need to drive to Washington DC when the answer's downtown Rocky Mount. It's right in front of our faces, what, what I'm saying about that. And so there's many things that we can do that's right here in Rocky Mount, and it's all about working together, uh, to address those issues.
Okay. This next question is directed towards a mayor candidate. First of all, can everyone hear me as I bring the question? What are your plans for an effective post-release reentry program for formerly incarcerated persons? Please address diversity and profiling in terms of police interactions and crime prevention. This first, this question goes first to Kevin Johnson.
So, uh, I'm just going to, you talking to me in the background? No. Can you hear me now? Okay, perfect. So, uh, when it comes to the, the reentry, uh, I, I looked into it in my last response, that is a serious issue. And, you know, I know, uh, seven-time felons who are now millionaires and they live here in this city. And so the, the ability to do it is there. And so we have to make sure, and that's, my commission is gonna work for that, it's gonna make sure that we get the right people in the room, talking and addressing issues and coming up with game plans. But then we can know what did work for somebody, what did not work, because there are a lot of people who are perpetual and just making the wrong decisions when they get out and get back onto the street, they have families provide for it. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna tackle that head on and I'm gonna also make sure that we focus on, uh, those issues before they happen. Because the reality is that we leave a lot on the table when it comes to investing in our young people, with mo, most of our city being young people. And so we have to make sure that we invest in them, we pour into them, we do more than just point and talk about them, and we wrap our arms around them, make sure that they make less dumb decisions as involved done, and we make sure that they do what they need to do to, to never be in that position where they have to be re-entered inside.
I'm just saying, uh, they just need to be reformed, reformed from being incarcerated to coming back, coming back, being back on the, uh, civilian world. And they, and they already have programs that's available to them that will help them adjust to their society. So that's, that's good that they already have, uh, programs and, um, things in place that will help them benefit to, to transition back into the civilian world.
I'm sorry, I was returning from the bathroom. Could I ask you to repeat the question?
Hey, what are your plans for an effective post-release reentry program for formerly incarcerated persons? Please address diversity and profiling in terms of police interactions and crime prevention.
Well, I'm gonna leave the job of policing to the professionals, which would be our police chief, who manages them, our city manager should manage that individual based on their performance. It's that simple. Now, as it relates to reentry programs, you know, you gotta start with the skills assessment. What am I capable of doing? What am I capable of performing? What are my aptitudes? And we're all different, you know, so we all have different sets, you know, of, of abilities. My father used to tell me all the time, he said, look, Sandy, there's always gonna be somebody prettier, which didn't, was a very low bar. Uh, there's always gonna be somebody richer, there's always gonna be somebody more talented, someone more quick, somebody's taller, somebody's gonna be whatever. And so what you have to do is find out who you are, starts with skills check for this. And then I think it looks like, what is the most appropriate thing to retrain? You know, one thing we don't typically talk about is entrepreneurship. You had a grandfather who went on strike and they just fucked him and he had five mouths. So he ultimately ended up renting houses and belting, uh, property and that became his job. So when you're unemployable, sometimes you have to look at yourself and you have to look at what the market is out there. And you have to have, uh, access to capitalization, I think perhaps, public, private kind of a, uh, interest in that sort of thing, may be very beneficial to that group. And I think you can be very successful. That's just one potential possibility.
We talk about the, the issues that are facing our community and diversity and people who are reintroduced back to society. There are, uh, organizations that already exist in our communities doing that. And we have to ask ourselves, what additional support might they need to further their cause? Our elected clerkship has a second chance program. There's a lot of things that are going, so one thing we gotta do is to look at what a mayor may do is to ensure that one, uh, the mayor has the support of the council. Right now, I am the only mayor or candidate that has the support of four city, city council people today. So moving priorities and mayor initiatives is something that certainly a candidate named Bronson Williams, uh, can do moving forward. But we do have those challenges that are facing us with people coming back, uh, to Rocky Mount and being gangfully employed, having opportunity to be happy with life. And, and profiling is something certainly that I deal with day in and day out. And as Sandy just said, that, uh, Mr. Robinson just said, that twice as good, twice as fast, we've heard that before. That's the reality. But I believe that we can meet those challenges head on as we do the work, as this lady in Richmond said a few months ago, it's about doing the work to get the job accomplished and being sure that everybody's ready to go.
Question seven is for the mayor candidates. Interactions at city council meetings recently have not featured much stability or rapport. Will you address the situation in this time? If Robinson can address question.
The job of the mayor is to basically govern city council. The job of the mayor is to basically govern city council in the meeting, and I think the job is to follow the rules of order, to restrict this and there is interpretation, and have control over the meeting.
Presiding over a city council meeting, one thing I can say, I'm a candidate that often, frequently attend every city council meeting there is. Can be the whole meeting, I'm there. You can find me in the corner, I may not speak, but I'm certainly there because I believe in being a student of government, so we know where the issues are. And when it comes to handling speakers and things that they, first of all, we don't handle speakers. They are free in that public platform to address their council, their elected official, as openly and freely as they want to. There should certainly be no censorship of saying what a person can and cannot say. They're there to bear their grievances. The mayor and the council is there to listen to such grievances. And throughout Rocky Mountain's history, since I've been going to those meetings, that has taken place, that there may be some concerns about the level of intensity of how people may say some of the emotional things of that nature, but people are people at the end of the day. But I believe when the council meeting is over, we should be able to come together and reason together.
So when it comes to presiding over city council meetings, that's something that I think, some things left on the table at this present day. So I said it before, I'll say it again, presiding over meetings is not always pretty. We, as the city, as the chief of the council, the presider of the council, you know, the responsibility will be incumbent upon me to make sure that not just the people in that room are represented, but the entire citizen body of the city is represented. And so we have to have DCC in order there, because that's what you all expect as citizens, as taxpaying citizens. And when it comes to just the attendance at city council meetings, all of the mayor candidates were addressed, I want to say this, if going to city council meetings alone is what did it, none of us need to be running. So there's more work that needs to be done than just showing up to a hollow room and sitting there for a few hours.
I'm just saying, they already have 15 municipal codes that sit in order for the council, council manager. And I believe in doing everything decently in order. I mean, people come there to express their thoughts or ideas to the council, but it still should be done decently and in order. And when, before they open, even the mayor, you know, he tells, addresses the council to do everything for them, and not on that they have mastered on police officers, that movement action. So that same should be done.
Okay, this next question is for the wards. A large portion of the rationally aging baby boomer population wants to age in place, age in place. Affordable options and universal design are sorely lacking. Do you foresee a way to address this need for your elected office? And if so, how? The first person to address would be Reece Pitts.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question again, I apologize.
A large portion of the rationally aging baby boomer population wants to age in place. Affordable options and universal design are sorely lacking. Do you foresee a way to address this need for your elected office? And if so, how?
Sure. First of all, the average age of, I would say, the ward one is 42 years old. So you can see, that was from the last census report. So you can see that that community is starting to change over and to become a younger community. I would like for some of our elders to really have the opportunity to be able to have an affordable option to retire with. My grandmother, before she passed away, she owned her own home, she was able to sell it, she was more happy in an elderly apartment complex, where she had people around her that knew her, and they built a nice community. I would love to get with developers in the Workforce Housing Commission, I really like those ladies, you know, from afar. I think the Workforce Housing Commission ladies are really passionate about going and developing in Rocky Mountain, and I would love to work alongside them in coming up with affordable options for our elderly within the community. Also, I feel as though we need a senior center on the Edge Home side of town, where seniors can actually go, and they can actually enjoy themselves, and take advantage of healthy opportunities that they could offer. I also think we need an option for our elderly veterans within our community, have something for them to be able to go and spend the remainder of their life and enjoy certain things within our community, and become mentors to some of the young people within the community. One of the things that we make sure that people are able to age and remain in their homes, and it means that if they have to do some redevelopment or renovation to their homes, so they can continue to stay in their homes. Most people retire, like to remain in their community and not be placed in assisted living. One of the things that, as the council member, what we're currently doing is offering housing grants, so that elderly and residents can remodel their homes, continue to live in their homes. One thing we have to study from Jim Johnson, it stated that Rocky Mountain was not aging friendly, where we build our facilities and our housing stock. And so those are some of the things that we have addressed as a community and as council members. The last thing I want to say, that in order to remain at home and be able to age and live in your community, we must be able to allow our elderly to make a livable wage before they become elderly people, so they can remain at home and have the income, so that they can take care of their home and their family. So we are currently doing that by offering those programs to our seniors and to homeowners, that they can be able to fix up their homes, continue to remain in their community.
Thank you. We do have an aging population, Jim Johnson and his process with us did say that our average age was 45 to 65, and there's a civil tsunami, he called it, that with the baby boom age, that we are seeing a lot more of us aging in that area. So healthcare becomes very critical for our aging population. That's why we are blessed with OIC, with a clinic in our event center that is in proximity of our community. The other thing is, is making our community safe, so that our seniors will want to stay in their community, and they can come out any time of day or night and feel safe in their community. That's why Chief Robinson is working with us to make sure that our community group to identify proactively the things in our community that would be challenging. So I think that for me, making our community safe, making healthcare comfortable for them, and providing fresh, affordable foods for them, so they can stay nutritionally healthy.
As a baby boomer, well, I am a baby boomer at the beginning of it, what I see that we need to do to help our seniors stay at home, is that we really, especially in my ward, a lot of the seniors live in dilapidated houses. I have been in some seniors' houses that rats actually walk across the floor, and I've had to go in and show them how to cork up a floor, so the rats won't come in. And I think a lot we need to do is first get to these slum landlords and have them fix these houses that people don't have to live in like that anymore. Because after you've worked all your life, you do not deserve to live like that. And I'm grateful that city council is putting some things in place to help our seniors, but we really need help over in Ward Three. We have a lot of seniors. They get in their yards and they work hard. They do a lot of stuff to make our cities beautiful, especially Ward Three where there's a lot of ugly. But the inside of their houses are horrible, mold runs through their houses, and landlords don't think that they're responsible for the mold that's in their house. We need to enforce city codes.
We need to continue to build affordable housing, particularly for our seniors. In my phone calls to some of the residents in Ward Three, I had spoke with one lady over on Evercraft, she was a senior in her apartment, and we need to improve upon those. And one thing that was, is within the realm, I believe, of our city, she complained about the smoking. I was involved to find out that there is smoking in a senior citizen facility. And so we start with that, but also having our seniors, as we go into age, I just retired in February, and I was fortunate enough to work for an aerospace company, so I had a little bit of retirement, a little bit of, as they say, profit sharing, but many of our seniors don't. Put programs in place to help those seniors and help with home improvements, so that they don't have to live in facilities with mold. I would do that and just work with them closely to make sure that their needs are met, and to put it forth at the city council. Thank you.
I personally know an aging family that's within Ward Four. There's a man that's worked for the city for 30 years, he's retired. Him and his wife stay in the home, neither one of them work, they both retired, they applied for one of those grants, as Mr. Knight alluded to, and I want to give credit where credit is due to the city, to be able to have housing programs that are available for our aging citizens. But this man and his family, they were denied their application because they said they'd made too much. And I simply want to understand, how is it that two individuals that are aging, that are staying together, not working, receiving social security, how is that too much? And I also want to be able to allow our aging population, whether they're single, whether they're married, I want them to be able to understand that the city understands their tenure in being here, and that alludes to gentrification. When we look at gentrification, we're going to have to ask ourselves and have it heart to heart, because many of our aging population will be those that will be displaced. So what are the incentives that we have? And I encourage some of you, if you are faced with that in your community, don't move unless they're going to pay you enough to create generational wealth. Thank you.
I believe we need to age gratefully, meaning our seniors should not be worried about how they're going to pay their bills. They should be worried about how their health is. They should have insurance to help take care of their health. I don't believe they should have to look at, well, are they going to eat or get their medicine? I believe our rehab program eligibility needs to be so that certain people who's not eligible can make eligibility. Maybe you don't count the rent that they're paying, that's going to be part of their income. So we have to do something to make sure that, because they have worked hard all their lives. Why are they going to be worried about where they're going to live at, how their rent going to get paid? Our elderly shouldn't be worried about that. That should be part of their mindset to even think about that. They should be in a position by the health of the city, where the rehab program will allow them, their homes to get fixed to the point where they don't have to pay that back, so it'll be grant money, not a loan. So our seniors needs to be able to age gratefully. And as part, as the city council, being one part with Sister Moore, I believe we will work toward making sure that they can do that. Thank you.
These are the four things that I would do if elected. Number one, have every elderly person remain at home as much as possible. Number two, provide care from the established policies already made. Number three, hold in some laws accountable. And if elected, number four, make sure the codes are up to date 24/7.
As it applies to elderly, I think we have a great example of how elderly housing is done here in Rocky Mountain, it actually is in Ward Five. That's Covenant Homes over on Country Club Drive, and it's income-based housing, and it goes through grants and then some private matching funds that go in with that, and we need to support that as much as we can. Also, when it applies to elderly folks, just because you happen to be a certain age doesn't mean that you're done and puts you on the top shelf, I mean, you can still do some stuff if you really want to. So if you want to keep your mind going, you should have the opportunity to go to work, because we have, we have jobs that are available, and we can't always fill them with qualified folks, and we can certainly learn from elderly folks, and you can work more time coming in, that's one option, encourage that. But then also incentivize the zoning that I mentioned earlier, for the, to the building of housing for the elderly. And then we also need to expand on certain things like gatekeepers that goes into the, to various homes of elderly one time a year, we can expand upon that, and it also teaches our young people some skills, and to see how other folks live, and also come together as a community and work together. So there's opportunity there that we can do things.
Hey folks, just bear with us, we appreciate your patience, but we're down to the last two questions. Since you've been hanging with us all this long, just hang on a little more.
Question nine is for all candidates. Question nine, how will you attract and engage our young adults to stay in Rocky Mountain and participate in our government?
First of all, I want to speak to being at city council meetings and sitting in hollow places. I think if we don't sit in hollow places, we wouldn't have educators. If we wouldn't sit in hollow places, we wouldn't have doctors. If we didn't sit in hollow places, we wouldn't have lawyers. And if we wouldn't sit in hollow places and call the city council, we would certainly know what information is available and spread truth as we campaign. That is so important as we go through this journey, during this process, because I talked about this misinformation. Rocky Mountain is certainly something that is in my heart, and you talk about young people moving, I would move from Rocky Mountain. So many of my friends went to Charlotte, Grisboro, you name it, but I wanted to invest right here in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I wanted to be right here in Rocky Mountain, where I can make a difference, where my parents are, where my family is, because if everybody leaves Rocky Mountain, what's going to be left? When we talk about future, that's what's so important in our community, that we engage young people to attend, and not saying that voting is for old people. That's the craziest thing I talk to people about all the time. Being involved is so important. We need to have more young people on commission. Certainly, I think that when you go to the polls and elect Bronson Williams, the youngest mayor elected in Rocky Mountain, you could be setting a precedent, that young people have a rightful place here in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And that's what we can do as citizens, do our part, and set in a tone that Rocky Mountain, North Carolina values old people in their infancy, all the way through their retirement later years, and certainly set a strong example by saying, young people matter.
And thank you so much.
Hi again, my name is Sandy Robertson. I have four young children. I have twins that are 26, I have a son who's 24, and I have a son who's 18. They're all starting to move back here. And the reason they're moving back here is because they're looking for what I can provide to them, right, some understanding and knowledge to move forward. I want them to stay in mine. I would love them. The reality is, how we keep people in Rocky Mountain at that age is we create opportunity. It's just as simple as that. It's opportunity. Where there's an opportunity for me, I will stay, and I will plant myself, and I will continue to grow. Where there is no opportunity, and I have the ability, I will find a place where I can be fit, I'll find the place where I can find my own self. That's the reality. Abundance hell, you know, lots of things hell, but it's Amnesty is hell, you know, lots of things hell, but it's about creating a dynamic environment which opportunity, economic opportunity is existent for our young children. That's the bottom line.
So when it comes to getting our young people involved, I think the biggest thing is to invest in them. I think that's what makes Street Games so successful is that there is a level of investment that Street Games have in our young people, which makes it appealing, which makes the street life appealing. So we need to invest in them. None of us in this room care nothing about being a part of anything that does not build us up and help us get to where we want to be. We need to be there as a city, leaders for our children. And that's why it's incumbent upon elected leaders, and that's the kind of leader that I'll be. I will be outside of the hollow spaces and I will be in the classrooms with the teachers. I think that's the problem. You know, we spend so much time talking about teachers and education and using that as a political football, but few of us put our money where our mouth is. Few of us actually go into the halls of these schools, sit in the classrooms, invest in these children and help promote a positive culture for our children to look at and say, you know what, I want to be that when I grow up. And that's what I'm going to be. That's who I've been as a citizen. That's who I'm going to be even more of as a mayor. Thank you.
I work with a lot of teenagers. I need to be on the bar, I come in contact with many teenagers, high school students. And I try and encourage them to be entrepreneurs, go out and have their own business, work for themselves. And just believe them, believe them, give them an opportunity, you know. Encourage them, help build them up. You know, you got to believe in yourself, that you can do it. You know, you got to step on out there, step out sometimes, step out there when you don't know. I stepped out here. This is my first time, you know, running for mayor. So I stepped out on faith, believing that I could do it. You know, sometimes you have to go Instagram, you know, you step on out, believe in yourself that you can do it. You know, same thing with teenagers, you know, believe them, love them, encourage them, you know. Some of them don't have the necessary funding, money at home, you know, working parents. You might have a single parent, you know, and they're working. So a lot of times, these young kids are turned to the street. But we want, we want young adults working. We want adults working to generate economic growth in the city of Rocky Mountain. So I would just encourage them and believe in it, give them an opportunity to be created just like, just like us, you know, just like you.
Thank you so much. Okay, the last question. And you may hold the mic, Ms. Moore, because this is for you. You get started this time. But what is your two-year vision plan for Rocky Mountain?
To be honest, I don't really have one.
Did you tell me?
Yes.
Thank you.
To be honest with you, I really don't have a two-year vision plan. But I do believe that I would have real impact on the city of Rocky Mountain based upon the knowledge or the spiritual knowledge that God gives me. So I believe as far as economic growth and economic development, state-of-the-art buildings, people concerns, key issues, just making forward progress for the city of Rocky Mountain, believing that we can work together, the city council, council members, work together, come together and agree or disagree. Or even when you're, when you're, you're not right, you can continue to, 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 to move forward. So I would just say maybe in three years, that there would be a real change on economic, economic growth in the city of Rocky Mountain.
So in my first two years, my plan is to, so first of all, we didn't arrive where we are in the city. All the good things about it, there are some bad that we've all addressed tonight. We didn't arrive here in two years. So it's going to take more to fully correct, sorry. Oh, it's going to take more to fully correct that. But in two years from now, I want something to be said, my vision is something to be said where the culture of this city has changed, where parents stop raising their children to leave Rocky Mountain. And if you don't know that that's happened, that's happened. And I see it every day with these children. And we need to let it be known that you can be successful here, you can leave, you can get better, you can come back here and invest here because Rocky Mountain is a great place. And I want to change the level of expectation that we have of our elected leaders. I've gone through so many doors where they say, oh, are you going to come around? Next year, you're going to come around, four more years now, you want to vote? And I personally commit to knocking on the same doors during my term where I knock on, ask them for votes because we need to do that as elected leaders. And that's something that I'm going to do. So in two years, I want to, I'm going to change the culture, start that ball rolling, change the culture of this city, the level of expectation of our elected leaders. It's something that needs to change if we're going to become a twenty-first century city.
Hi again, Sandy Robertson here. My vision for the city of Rocky Mountain is to establish a plan that can be measured. Because I believe that measuring things creates accountability for everybody who's elected by you. And I think the plan looks something like this. Our crime rate needs to drop a hundred percent, of course, but in two years, let's set an objective goal of fifty percent. We need to show that our economy is growing. Let's reduce our unemployment rate from six percent to four percent. Let's evidence the fact that our economy is growing and there's opportunity here by housing starts increasing two hundred percent. Let's, let's show that our school system, while not normally the domain of the city, will at least produce some sort of collaborative effort with the school board where we're helping in any way we possibly can to drop the dropout rate, reduce the dropout rate, to promote early childhood education too, which are very significant factors in terms of the ability for somebody to earn a living going forward. So I think it looks like that. I believe that by showing and producing results, you have a chance to judge those who stand for you. My vision for Rocky Mountain is one of greatness, is one of prosperity, and it's one which I think that we all should share.
My vision of Rocky Mountain is a shared vision because it's our vision of Rocky Mountain. That's what it's about. It's though Bronson Williams, this mayor, is sitting on a silo and making a dictation as to what Rocky Mountain's supposed to look like, sound like, and feel like. But it's simply what the citizens of Rocky Mountain want it to look like, sound like, and feel like. And that is, I want a vibrant downtown for what I see. I see in two years, a hotel downtown Rocky Mountain. I see in two years, a parking deck being built in downtown Rocky Mountain. I see in two years, businesses opening in downtown Rocky Mountain. And I see that spreading abroad and having an impact totally citywide. We're going to grow north, east, south, and west. Given the total city and our opportunity reaps of the benefits of the seeds that's been sowed for us too long. For too long, there's been members of our community who've been sowing seeds and have not been able to reap an harvest. And now is the time to reap a harvest in Rocky Mountain for all citizens in Rocky Mountain. No matter where you live at, your tax dollars matter, I hear so many times tonight. And the plan and the vision must be realistic. Must be realistic at the end of the day. So as we talk about things, I'm happy to see that some of the candidates' positions on ads related to the school systems have shifted. Because as we get more information as to what a mayor's role is and what the city council's role is and get more understanding, we realize that some of the things that's been put out is not the responsibility of council. I thank you. I appreciate your input.
Thank you. And that concludes. Good evening. Let's give the candidates another round of applause. You did a great job giving this information this evening. My name is Darby Spencer-Habits. And we just want to give a special thank you to all of our sponsors, Democracy North Carolina, Hillsdale Community Organization, North Carolina Association of Community Development Corporations, P-FRAD, Rocky Mountain Racial Justice School, Southeast Rocky Mountain Community Organization. And everyone that was on the committee for, let's meet the candidates tonight, will you please stand? And now it is my pleasure to introduce you to the chairman of the Meet the Candidates Event Planning Committee, Marcus Thompson.
Looks like we made it today, y'all. I tell you. You know, one thing that brings people together is the shared struggle, right? I think we've been through it when it comes to the microphones and the heat and just the whole thing. But we made it through together, y'all. So there's nothing else you can think we did that. So again, my name is Marcus Thompson. I am the regional manager organizer for an organization called Democracy North Carolina. We are a statewide nonprofit that fights for voting rights. And so this is something that we do is to try to prevent, create opportunities for people to access the political process, to learn what their candidates stand for and learn, you know, basically what is at stake in this election. So last thing, I won't be remiss in my duty, if I didn't, once more time, thank all the candidates who showed up. This is all about voting, though, right? We, all you in this road, you survived this and you went through this. I'm pretty sure that you are going to vote, but if I were to do this, right? If you were going to vote before, you're going to vote now, right? It's a commitment. So that's great. But you know what? It's our duty to inform our friends and our neighbors about this election and to let them know the stakes because it matters what happens in Rocky Mountain. Who's going to decide that in this upcoming election? So early voting has already begun. So people, so you don't need ID to vote. And you haven't registered already, you can register right there on the spot. So let people know that. Let people know that this is their opportunity and let their voice be heard. So there are two different times. There's going to be, this Saturday in Escond County, you can vote this Saturday. It's the twenty-eighth for Nash County. Because Escond is this Saturday. In Nash County, it's the twenty-eighth, so a lot of people might not know that. But you can vote again. You can vote Monday through Friday in both counties from six to eight. You can go to the Board of Elections in Nash County. I'm sorry. Y'all won't vote. But that's right, from eight to six in both areas. At the Nash Board of Elections Union is where you can vote, or at the Braswell Library. And in Escond County, at that Board of Elections, or at the Department of Social Services at three o'clock, on 30th Road, right here in Rocky Mountain. Man, y'all ready to go? So listen, your friends, your neighbors. Oh, that's right. That's, right, that's right. We don't have to have ID, you have to have a passport. Two forms or something where you're registered, right? For like your. Oh, for real? I got to go to work, y'all. But you want to, take people to vote. Take people to get registered to these places, get them voting, let them know what happened here tonight. Thank you so much, Darby.
Hello, this is DC Ian. And before me, I have Nehemiah Smith. And I would like for him to give me an overview of what he thought about tonight's forum. Now, I thought it was the wrong format. I would have loved to seen the community come in, have index cards, and they could ask the questions. So I want to hear Nehemiah Smith's point of view.
Well, when I looked at the format of it, I didn't think it was going to be like this. But in that it was, I too thought it was the wrong format. I thought there should have been more engagement from the, from the audience. That's not to say that the people who put it on should not have had questions. But I do think that there should have been some questions that came from the citizenry, those people who have been voting. Some of these questions seem redundant to me. It was not even killed. It was not even killed in that it did not address, it's my, it did, it was, it was not even killed in that, that it did not address some of the issues that were going on in, in the wars or with the mayors of law. And it wasn't evened out. You know, I think the wars got more questions than the mayors got. I think there should have been an evening out of the questions. Overall, as for the performance of the people who were involved, the candidates, I think that some of the ward candidates did well, some didn't do so well. As for the mayor candidates, I think that you have mayor candidates that you realize from the questions that were asked, that really didn't have a clue about really what it is to be mayor. And I think that that's unfortunate. Yes, we live in a debacle city where everybody has an opportunity to voice their opinion. Everybody has an opportunity to run in certain elections. But I think that you should be informed before you get into these things. And a lot of, I think that we, it showed tonight that some of these candidates were not informed. And so what happened is that you got a lot of circular reasoning. There was not enough, for me, there was not enough engagement, and that's the format they said, but there was not enough engagement between the candidates. So you could truly see who knew what and who didn't know. So I was concerned about that, but A, it's over now. The one good thing about it is, is that the room was packed. It was wall to wall. People were everywhere. People are engaged. And I'm hoping that that engagement, I'm hoping that, that the turnout at the, at the, at the voting booth mirrors what we saw here tonight. I'm hoping that we get a big turnout. I think that that's going to be important. But also, I think it's important that all of us realize that we need to get out and vote. We need to get out and vote. Organizations like NAACP and other organizations, SCLC, you know, a lot of these people die, fall, bleed, suffer, that we can have the right to vote. And not only just African-Americans, blacks in this country have a right to vote, so that everybody can have a right to vote. So let us get out and let us vote. Watch this video of this forum. And from it, draw your own conclusions. I've given you what I believe went wrong and what went right. But draw your own conclusions from it. And really take an opportunity to look at the candidates and from that, see who you believe can best lead Rocky Mountain for. I believe that this is going to be an important election. Now is the time for us to be able to get out and, and to express ourselves at the ballot, at the ballot box. But more importantly, we are going to, this election will show us the direction in which Rocky Mountain will go in the coming decades in our region, in our area.